Is everybody ready? I'd like to welcome all of you here to our St. Cloud Council Workshop this Thursday, September the 19th, 2019. With that, I'll call this meeting to order. We'll begin with our roll call.
Mayor Blackwell.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Matheny.
Here.
Councilmember Cooper. Councilmember Askew.
Here.
Councilmember Trace.
Here.
Our first item on our workshop agenda is the discussion regarding Recreation Open Space Element, CPA. Is our consultant going to speak first? Stephanie? Okay.
Yes. Do you all have our presentation?
It should be on the.
Just hit back on the slide.
Oh, sure is. Thank you very much. Thank you all for having us tonight. My name's Kristin Kayborn. I'm the project manager at GAI Consultants. I have with me tonight Andrew McCown, who's one of our senior planners. A lot of the front part of the presentation you have seen before. I'm just going to run through the, and remind you a little bit from the master plan that you adopted in the spring, because the master plan informs the changes to the Parks Recreation Open Space Element of your comprehensive plan. So we know that you all have a long agenda tonight. If I get going too fast on the refresh, please let me know. I'm happy to answer any questions. Andrew's going to take over and go through the applicable information to the Recreation Open Space Element. So when we did your master plan, it was an updated refresh of your master plan that was done in 2006. It became a blueprint for the Parks and Recreation Department for the future, looked at everything from renovations to existing parks to land acquisition, and then how to help the project be, or help the department continue to be sustainable and enhance the quality of life in St. Cloud. So we did a complete inventory of all of your existing assets, and along with that inventory, you might remember that we did an assessment of the condition of them. That helped us inform the capital improvement program going forward in prioritizing parks that were not in as nice of condition as the ones that might have been well-loved over many, many years. We did an analysis, a lot of mapping as part of that, and we also did public input. We spent a lot of time on public input so we can bear, marry our consultant opinion with what the public feels their needs are. So that informed the master plan, and the comprehensive plan is, of course, your legal document that is going to move forward in the future. So just a quick overview of the field studies. We inventoried 66 active amenities, 46 passive amenities, buildings, furnishings, all of your signs, and we came up with 14 safety concerns. Those are things that we notify the department of as we are doing the field work. All of them have been resolved since that time. We do a service area analysis, and for St. Cloud, with the way that your city limits are laid out, this is where we become very unique to every city. We did a 10-minute walk service area analysis, but we also did a five-minute drive. Because of the way our city limits are, it's going to be difficult for you to have a 10-minute walk from all of your parks, especially as you get a little bit further south. So we felt that it was reasonable that somebody be able to walk within 10 minutes or drive within five minutes. So this is how you look now. Of course, the grid area is very green. That's showing the 10-minute walk. The pink is the areas in the city, the residential areas, I will call out, in the city that are unserved by a park within a 10-minute walk. And then gray areas, of course, are within the city limits, but they're non-residential. So we want to take that out of the analysis. You can see you get much better when you have a five-minute drive. You have a lot more coverage, a lot more park coverage to your residential areas. On the public input, we had several public input meetings. Am I going too fast? This is...
No, that's me in the picture.
We were just admiring Dave's.
Oh!
I thought he had the same shirt on, but it's different.
Definitely losing my hair up there.
You're a star. You're memorialized in the document. We had a series of public workshops. We did both open public workshops as well as focus groups so we could talk to some of the stakeholders in the community. And basically, we take all of the data points that we get. I also want to remind you, we did a statistically valid survey as part of this project as well. So we take all of the data points that we hear, and we start to digest them down into themes. So the themes that we heard were the desire for more water activities, the love of birds and other wildlife, concern for overcrowding at some of the parks, interest in blending technology, which is a very common theme at many places, and then the need for safer routes to parks. So these are very unique to St. Cloud based on what we heard. And this graphic that you purposely can't see on the slide but looks really good in the book is taking all of the data points, again, that we heard, and we came up with the emerging themes. Through the process, we tested those five emerging themes, connected communication, trails and paths, equity and inclusivity, distinct user experiences, and canopy and wildlife. And those emerging themes move into the master plan, and after we tested them with the public and with the Parks and Recreation Department, they become the guiding principles. The guiding principles are what, the part of your plan that are going to basically inform the recommendations. So anytime we make a recommendation for an improvement, a land acquisition, anything like that, they all tie back to one of these guiding principles that, again, are based on what we saw in the field and what we heard. So here are your five guiding principles that the plan was based on. Quick, again, run-through in it, equity and inclusivity. So these are things that are, that might not be immediately apparent, but we want to make sure that no matter what park a resident goes to in the city of St. Cloud, they have a basic expectation for the condition of the park. We want to make sure that we have equitable access. So we talked about the 10-minute drive, excuse me, the 10-minute walk or the five-minute drive, that each park is, offers enough diversity of activity so all age groups can use it, and that they feel safe and comfortable while they're there. Trails and pathways, you all already had a Trails master plan when adopted. I'm actually not sure if it was adopted, but you did have a Trails master plan that was very recent that we used to inform this plan, and then we looked for additional connections that would help, especially as you look to potentially annex and acquire land in the future. Canopy and wildlife was very important. We heard a lot about this. You all are very fortunate that you already provide a lot of really unique user experiences to get out into the wild, Peckhorn Nature Park, Chisholm Park, really have some neat things that you can do, but people want to make sure that they have shade and comfort and that they can get out of the city life and the bustle of that, and then having Florida-friendly landscaping and habitat. Distinct user experiences. So we had a lot of single or double input pieces that added up to, well, what do all these mean? Some people wanted another pool, other people wanted a dog park, some people wanted what you already have, a ninja course, things like that. So what we decided was, especially to help with the perception of crowding at your parks, is that each park would have a distinct user experience, with the idea that in St. Cloud, you have a really neat opportunity to have signature activities at each of your parks that makes them unique, and that would have your residents be like, I would like to go to the dog park today. So you might go to OP Johnson. I'm just making this up. But each park, the idea is to spread out the crowds and have something unique in each park that can drive your residents to spread out a little bit, enjoy all you have to offer instead of the one that might be right down the street from their house. Connected communication. So we all know that technology is here, as much as we want to believe that kids aren't, and adults aren't, in their faces and their phones all the time. This is something that was really important. So things that we might be seeing are interactive signage, where if you are at one park, you might be able to scan a code and see what other parks are near you, and you might get a pop-up that says, hey, you've got a seven-minute walk to the lakefront, and when you get to the lakefront, you'll be at the east end of the park, and there you can get on a trail and a boardwalk and have a lake edge experience. So interaction and things like that are things that are going to be considered part of the connected communication. One of the things that's really important that you have never had as one of your plans here are park equity standards. So these are, again, going back to the basic equity when somebody goes to a park in the city of St. Cloud, that they can have an expectation of the condition of the park and what's going to be there. So again, these were informed by what was important in the public and what we heard through our series of public meetings and the survey, to be in the parks. So a community park in St. Cloud, and remember, this is unique to St. Cloud, this is not something that you will see defined by the National Recreation Parks Association, because there is no such thing. There is no strict definition. So in St. Cloud, we decided that community park would be a park that is over five acres, and it will have all of those bulleted points included in the design of that park. So in your existing parks that fall into a community park categorization because there are five or more acres, if there were any deficiencies in your existing community parks, our capital improvement plan directly addressed those deficiencies by recommending that those be one of the first priorities to bring your current parks up to standards. We also include this graphic. This graphic is important because there are adjacencies. Obviously, every park you have isn't going to be a rectangle, but we include this, and there are important things. There's a perimeter sidewalk around the entire thing so people can exercise, walk the entire park. You'll see crosswalks at all of the intersections to be able to get into it. It's got parking included in the park, so you're not relying on street parking. And then having open space adjacent to pavilions, having unprogrammed open space and some type of sports activity is very important, because you'll find oftentimes that open space is one of the most used part of a park. Go figure. Neighborhood parks, these are your smaller parks that are between two and 4.999 acres. These are what you see typical walk-to park, although we did understand that in St. Cloud, one of the values is you don't want to have people parking on the side of the road for your parks. So we do have small off-street parking lots in your neighborhood parks, and then, again, the same type of appropriate adjacencies, crosswalks, shade, benches, all of those things that are integrated. We did a land acquisition map, and for this, it's very simple. We don't put a specific dot down on a parcel we want you to acquire, but we did look at areas where you do need to be looking to acquire to increase the level of service. You probably know intuitively where those places are. We're looking to the south, right in the old affectionately known as Donut Hole, and then off to the east. So those are areas where you have lower level of service, especially for your residential areas, and should be looking to acquire land to improve the level of service in those areas. Any questions with that? I'm going to, that's the overview of the plan that you already have in place, and I'm going to let Andrew take over and tell you how it moves into the comprehensive plan and your Recreation Open Space Element.
We have any questions? Councilmember Matheny.
I know you're surprised. So I was just thinking while you were talking about the parks, is there a possibility, or would this be a good strategy, if we kind of, as a development came in, and we kind of incentivized them to make a bigger park, make a community park inside of their development? You know, they're going to have to have a park anyways, but we say, hey, we'll give you impact fee credits, Parks and Rec impact fee credits or whatever, somehow to like create like little pocket parks inside of developments that are coming in versus us trying to go acquire land independently? I don't know. Is that maybe a strategy we could employ, like as development comes in and one of your circles? It's like, oh, hey, would you guys be interested, instead of having a half-acre park, do like a three-acre park, and we'll...
Yes, absolutely. And we talk about that, especially for, in the actual plan document, especially in the areas that are in the JPA but aren't yet annexed. So those three areas that are targeted on that land acquisition map are immediate needs based on your current residential population and build-out. So we do address that, and that goes back to a lot of why we developed the park equity standards. So if you all want to negotiate any kind of impact fee credit, we want to make sure that you have some basis of why you're asking them to meet your minimum park requirements. Because what you don't want them to do is to come in and give you a half-acre in the back of a subdivision that feels like that park is only for that subdivision, and no one would ever want to go there if they didn't live there. We want to have an open, inclusive system in the city of St. Cloud. So that is really why we have the park equity standards in there, so you have some negotiation tools outside of your impact fee ordinance, which we did not get into as part of this plan, but that ties directly into it being adopted in your Recreation Open Space Element as that moves forward.
Yeah, because I think the last time you guys were here, I had brought that up about how each individual subdivision has a park, but I said, but it's just for the community, and maybe there was a way we could keep that in mind when development standards that come in, that the, say, hey, you're going to have this park, but that park has to be open to everybody, and they have to have interconnections out of the community so that it's not just... I mean, I know myself, I probably wouldn't go internal to a subdivision, but at least it would like open up opportunities. And the other question is for the city manager. I brought this up before. Is anybody watching the real estate that's going up for sale? I know you had said you were going to try to find a staff person to kind of keep an eye on that, but, for example, we had talked about a parcel that someone had bought that was at the east end of the lakefront, and they wanted to put a house there and do some other things. I was like, oh, that would have been a great catch for us to buy that piece, because it could have been a trailhead, you know, like is, and you were going to look into some staff person to kind of keep an eye on that?
I've asked, excuse me, I've asked planning and zoning to keep an eye on that kind of stuff and make sure that it's going to meet our needs if we pursue that.
And so somebody is like every day, like watch, check in?
I wouldn't say they're doing it every day.
Because that's the thing. I mean, it would, it'll sell before, you know, I don't, maybe reach out to a Realtor to see if they'd set some parameters, so like email you things that pop up for sale on 34769, just so. I just know we master plan everything, and then the next time I turn around, that property that we thought we were going to, it's got houses on it, so it's like, you know, we need to keep a pulse on the, what pops up for sale, too.
We haven't engaged a Realtor, but like I said, I asked planning to keep an eye on that kind of property that would be applicable, and parks also, for anything we could use for that. Like, one of the things we just did, we reached out to the school for that property across from 901 Virginia again, so that's one example, so, because we needed it.
Yeah, but that's a need.
It's a need. I get that.
But yeah, I mean, like, I guess, and I don't know how the rest of the council feels on it, I'm one person, but if we could get a dedicated person to keep an eye on it, like, all the time, you know? I mean, to say you keep an eye on it, I don't know what that means. Like, on what regularity are they looking, like, once a month? I don't know. So I just think it would be great to keep an eye on stuff that pops up for sale, because we might say, oh, that would be great to do something.
It's got storage units on it now.
Yeah. Now it's got a metal garage.
Somebody had to say that.
But do you, do you guys agree with that? So we could give them direction?
Okay.
I don't think any of us have a problem with that.
Okay.
Yeah.
So the first thing I think we need to do is set aside budget and money to, if something comes up, it's already there, ready to go, we have $200,000, $500,000, whatever you think the appropriate amount of money is to have set aside and ready for, to buy something if it comes up.
You know, I mean, we have impact fees, so...
Yes.
I don't, I think it'd be too hard to kind of, and I'm not thinking just for parks. I mean, there might just be some other use that pops up once somebody sees the property, like, oh, great, that's 15 acres, we can do something with it.
And then on Center Lake Ranch, when that came through, there's a park that'll be dedicated to the city for impact fee credits. I think that's going in the right direction, and New Nolte is a, an area that looks like it's got the need as well, and we can just do the same kind of thing, too. So I think we've done it in the past, and hopefully it comes to fruition.
So we're good with that? We'll get some mechanisms, or somebody's consistently looking for those kind of things?
I don't think it's that hard. A Realtor can just set up a search parameter, and you just get emailed every day, and they're going to want to email it to you because...
We have a couple.
Well, but if you're going to do that, because there's, as you just indicated, there are plenty of Realtors that would love the opportunity to bring a sale to the city and earn a commission on it. So if you're going to, if you're going to work with a procuring agent on behalf of the city, you probably need to do some sort of RFQ or RFP out there to get that, because there are a lot of folks that would like, like the opportunity to go out there and do that.
Real estate isn't exempt?
Real estate is, is likely exempt, but...
That you could just hire somebody to do it?
But I, I think it would be very frankly, respectfully, I think it'd be very difficult for staff to select one Realtor over another, since they are, it is a very competitive field, and without having some sort of our public procurement process associated, I think you'd be putting staff in a difficult position to just bring one back over, over others.
I wonder if like the online, you know, Realtor.com, you can set it up? Yeah.
Well, you can, but you know, if you recall, most real estate transactions, the commission money gets paid out of the closing proceeds. So, and if you are a buyer and you, and you bring your own agent, your, your agent basically splits the commission with the selling, with the listing broker. So it really doesn't cost the buyer more money, in theory. Now, a seller obviously could raise the purchase price if they know they have to pay commission, but, but in reality, it shouldn't cost the city more money to do that.
That's not what I'm saying. Like, go onto Realtor.com and set up like parameters, and then it'll just, this website will just email whoever the designated staff person is, like new listings that...
You could do that, too, for sure.
You know? Send them to Andre, he can weed through those.
He's a Realtor, too.
Well, there you go. Win-win.
Sorry. Anything else?
We'll come back with the methodology and do that.
Yeah, okay.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Andrew?
Hi, my name is Andrew McCown, and I'm a senior planner with GAI Consultants, working with Kristin closely on this project. And I'm always disappointed, because she gets all the upfront cool work, and then I get to deal with, you know, comp plan policies at the end, which I guess is kind of cool. But Deputy Mayor, to answer your first question, we will address that directly in part of the policies that are proposed, so, so stay tuned. Okay, so the first thing that I wanted to do very quickly is just go over what is in place today in your existing Parks and Rec element. And the foundational piece of most of the elements is what's called the level of service, and Parks and Rec is no different. And in this element, there are a couple of different ways that the city kind of tracks the level of service for parks, and some are more for recommendations, and some are actual level of service standards that the city is supposed to meet. And the first one is, is the overall park acreage. So five acres of overall park per resident is the overarching standard for the whole city, and then four acres of community and neighborhood park per thousand residents. And that's what's currently established. And there are additional recommendations for how big a particular park is intended to be, and how many people they're supposed to serve, and what radius. Some of those are in a little bit of a competition with each other, so that's not the best way to try to do that, which is what we, what we've tried, managed to do, I think, in, in what we're proposing. And then on top of that, there are additional standards in the comp plan that relate to how many, how many people per type of facility. And you can see the list is pretty long, and each one of those has a different standard. And those, as Kristin would attest, this is, this is kind of the old way of establishing a level of service for your park system, and we are getting away from that as the industry as a whole is getting away from this. A couple of the other objectives that follow that are things like requirements for how often you update your level of service standards, also requirements for how parks are to be maintained and additional planning, and how often, and which parks require master plans. Objective five addresses accessibility. Objective six is about acquiring new parklands, and in this section, you'll find the language about impact fees, fees in lieu of dedication, and we're going to address those also in, in the proposed language. And then in the last objective, it's how you, how you'll coordinate for co-locating facilities, coordinating with the, the school board for, for shared use facilities. So what are we proposing to change? And remember, these are all based on the recommendations and the findings of the master plan. So some of the main things is we're kind of updating the main goal of the element to be more in line with, with how the philosophy of the Parks and Rec Department is today. The, the current goal is, is, you know, very, very dry and very obligatory. And with this new goal, it's going to be more in line with, with the real intent of a Parks and Rec Department. We're going to replace the old level of service structure with, with what's, what's being called in the master plan, the park equity standards, but really, it's just a level of service standard. We're going to remove or update the date-specific policies. So in, in a lot of comp plan elements, you'll see, by such and such a date, the city shall. And we're either eliminating those if those were done, or we're updating them as appropriate. We are, we're promoting a lot of the, the tenants of the master plan specifically in the policies, and you'll see those that are recommended. And, and then we're going to update the, the policies about joint use and impact fees and, and acquisition. And so all of those policy changes together, we believe, means that it's really just going to be a replacement of the element rather than just a strike-through underlying of, of new policies. It's, it's going to be easier for everybody to kind of see the, the thing as a whole, since there are so many things changing. So as you can see, goal one is the, is the single goal of the element, and it, it really reflects the, the true philosophy of the Parks and Rec Department now, to create safe and inclusive opportunities for recreation, physical activity, enjoyment of nature, and personal interactions that build social infrastructure and cultivate sense of community for all St. Cloud residents. And, and we feel that this is a much more descriptive goal than the current adopted goal. So just like in the current element, the first objective will be related to the level of service. And as Kristin mentioned, we are going towards what we're calling the park equity standards. And those are going to be based on the two different types of parks, the neighborhood park and the community park. And it's, the, the entire level of service is going to be based on either the walking distance from a neighborhood park or the driving distance from a community park. And if you recall, the neighborhood park, which is the smaller, the smaller scale park, the two acres or more, the, to, in order for, for a, a, an individual property to be served by that park in a level of service type of way, then it's going to have to be within a five-minute walk. And so when you draw all those lines, anything outside of those is not being served to a sufficient level of service standard. But on top of that, that park also has to have a minimum, a minimum quality and program inside that park. And these are taken directly from the, the master plan. And, and it's basically the list that, that Kristin went through. So a neighborhood park will have to have a playground, a sport court, a minimum of a quarter acre of unprogrammed open space, a kiosk, off-street parking. And then from the master plan, this is what that, this is taken directly from the master plan. This is what that typical neighborhood park would look like. So also, a community park, you would have to be within a, a five-minute drive of this park for it to be providing adequate level of service for your property. And it, and also, that park would have to meet these minimum standards, and these are what, are what the master plan calls the equity standards. So it would have to be five acres or greater, it would have to meet expectations or better, it would have to have a sports field, minimum of one acre of flexible open space, a destination playground, pavilions and picnic tables, restrooms, welcome kiosk, a distinct user experience as defined in the Parks and Rec master plan, and then off-street parking. And then this is the same graphic from the master plan, the typical community park. And then the, the policy 114 just says that every time you update the Parks and Rec master plan, you will update your entire level of service analysis for, for the city. And we think that's sufficient. I believe the old, the old element said that it had to be updated every year. That's probably a little too, a little too often, and it can get, it can get tedious. So we recommend just every time that you update the master plan, you update the level of service analysis. And so after that, we get into the policies that address more of the, the planning and the aspirational goals of, of the, the park system. So just like in, in the existing element, we have requirements to monitor, excuse me, monitor and upgrade the parks as necessary, so there are standards for how often you update the master plan, which we're recommending every five years, no more than every five years. And then a survey will be conducted each time that you do that. And you will update your inventory as you acquire new properties or you make improvements to existing properties. And also, we say that you'll continue to use... And also we say that you'll continue to utilize the, the Recreation Advisory Committee, just like your current, your current element says. And I apologize, the, the objective at the top here is a, is a copy from a previous slide. So the, the objective 1.3 actually says, "In order to enhance the overall use and enjoyment of the city, parks and open spa, parks and open spaces, the city shall provide comfortable, inclusive environments that promote the safety and security of its users." So if you, I apologize for the, the copy area there. But this one is, is all about providing accessibility, both physically and locationally, regardless of the socioeconomic status, the age or ability for, for all your parks. It also talks about using the principles of, of crime prevention through environmental design or SEP TED. I'm sure you've all heard about the, about that. And then also there, there's an idea about updating your overall wayfinding for the city and your parks and your trails by a, a date certain. The fourth objective is, is promoting increased park use, motivating, motivate healthy activities and decrease vehicle parking pressures on parks by creating comfortable and safe routes to parks for alternative modes of transportation. So this is, this is all about getting people to parks in alternative modes, not by automobiles. So we're maintaining a Trails master plan to be updated every five years that will be incorporated into the capital improvements plan. You're providing safe connections to the parks at the edges, to all of the roads, including crosswalks. And you're also interconnecting the internal amenities of a park with sufficient sidewalks and paths. Objective five, "The city shall use the park system as an opportunity to protect and enhance the resources, biodiversity, and ecological services of its natural lands in a way that fosters environmental stewardship and awareness." And that, this is going directly back to the master plan and the goal for enhanced native protection for wildlife and canopy. All of those are, excuse me, all of those are housed in this, in this objective. So it, this one talks about the use of drought tolerant and native and Florida friendly plants in your park landscaping. It talks about protecting native tree canopy. It talks about providing new canopy along pedestrian paths and parking lots, and that's inside your parks. So making sure that the sidewalks and paths, they're shaded by canopy as much as possible. And then actively removing invasive species from your park spaces. And then trying to promote opportunities within your parks for interaction and observation with nature on a day-to-day basis. And the, the closer you can bring the people through boardwalks or observation decks, the better. And then the last policy in this is about low-impact design and integrating that into your parks as much as possible. So objective six is, it, it deals with park acquisition and impact fees. And here's where we can discuss how and when we would prefer dedication in lieu, or dedication as opposed to fees in lieu. And I think based on, based on the master plan, we were leaning towards the preference of the city would be, would be the impact fees, but not totally ruling out dedication in lieu of the fees. But if a developer were to dedicate, the only way that they would receive impact fee credits would be is if it meets the standards for a level of service park. So it would either have to be a two-acre neighborhood park meeting, meeting those standards for, for a neighborhood park. It could be raw land, or it could be a full, a fully developed park, or a community park being five acres or more, meeting all of those standards. So to dedicate essentially leftover land that, that would not fulfill, fulfill the level of service goals of the comp plan, would not provide impact fee credits. It would, it's nice, but this is a level of service document. And if their dedication is not meeting level of service standards, then they should not get credit for it. That's how we have structured this so far. So that's why we would say that the fees are probably preferred unless they can dedicate a, an acceptable park from a level of service standard.
I believe Mr. Ashkin would like to ask a question.
Thank you, Mayor. Andrew, is the, when you're talking about that stuff, is it some mathematical equation that we know we don't want it in the back? Is it more towards the front, this two acres? Is it something that's accessible and are these developments are going to allow people to come into their development to go to the park?
I think it's probably, that's, that's a good point, that if, I would say that if a, a community is gated, that would certainly preclude the possibility of dedicating in lieu of impact fees. If it's not gated, then I would, I would probably tend to say as long as it meets the level of service standards, then it would still apply. There may be situations where if it's so remote and so out of the way that only, you know, only very few people would actually benefit from this, you're still, you're still either within a five-minute walk, sorry, a 10-minute walk or a five-minute drive. So that's, that's about getting people to the park. That's the benchmark you have to meet.
And the standard that we're going to make these folks build these parks and the cost of that, I would assume it's going to be absorbed by the development, but the overall cost throughout the years, has the city picked that up or is that something?
It would be a dedicated park. So the ci, the city would maintain that park after it's dedicated, yes. Unless you can reach some other agreement with, with the developer.
I think we can reach some agreement.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. And there are, let's see. Right, so we don't talk, obviously we don't talk about the specific fees because that would be adopted at a later time. But so the balance of this is about coordinating with Osceola County and their land use, their land use decisions. So, and a lot of, a lot of the coordination is more or less from your existing element. So a lot of the coordination with the public, the school district and the county, most of those are, are the same or similar. The, the last objective is about joint use parks and again, more about, more about coordinating with developers and outside agencies. And also we're working on a map series that will also go along with this and these will be your, your typical maps that you would see in an element, such as your existing parks and, and underserved areas. So if there are any other questions, I'm happy to entertain them.
Do you know of any cities that have effectively used impact credits to implement parks? To me, it's just, it's somewhat of a challenge because most people will not pull into a subdivision if they don't live there to go use a park. And then say we're going to, it's got to become a public park. I was wondering, do you know of any places, cities that have done that effectively?
Cities that have accepted public dedication of, dedications of park spaces? Yeah, there are, they're usually associated with larger developments. I mean Balden Park is a good example, where there are some large parks. It's a pretty urban area, the, area there. Some of the context in St. Cloud is a little different, south, in the south end of the city. A lot more, I don't believe there are many gated subdivisions, but definitely secluded, you know, subdivisions. But yeah, I think there are lots of examples where developer dedicated parks work. Clearly they work better, the more interconnected the neighborhood is, especially to the surrounding, the surrounding area. And I would also point out that I don't, I don't believe that it would be a requirement for the city to accept a, the dedication of a park. That it would be at, you would have to agree to, and if you don't like how it's situated or where it's situated, I don't believe there's a reason the city would be compelled to accept it.
Councilmember Trace.
So if, if we go down the path of allowing developers to either dedicate property and get credits, I just want to make sure we don't get into the situation where they do that instead of providing the amenities that they would have otherwise. Because right now, in a lot of the areas in the southwestern end of town, we don't have any city parks down there, but they have a decent level of service because they're HOA provided and maintained parks. So they have basketball courts and pools and whatnot and city's not having to fund anything to maintain it. We didn't have to fund any capital to, to build it. They're, they provide it themselves. But if they could have dedicated a park and then just not done anything and we're footing the bill. So I, we don't have a minimum level of service, do we, of, of parks that we have to provide? Because you know, a COE rings a bell of if you have like, you know, 10 to 50 units, you have to have a tot lot, 50 to 100, you have to provide a pool, 100 to 200, you have to provide, and you have to, they have to provide certain things. They're just for their residents in that community, but it's providing a good level of service on something that the city doesn't have to maintain. So I just want to make sure we don't get down the path of us having to construct everything when they're already being done themselves.
Right. Councilperson Thien.
Yeah, to answer Mr. Trace's question, so the way the impact fees work is it's in above and beyond what they were required.
But what requirements do we have now?
Yeah, I don't know. Andre or Veronica could maybe answer that.
I don't think we. Okay, so I, I don't think.
Yeah.
I don't think we require anything now, so if they just provide area, then you know, just say, use my.
Yeah, so we maybe need to add some language to ours, but yeah, it should be like above and beyond, to your point, not, you don't get credit for something you were going to have to do.
And, and, and remember, the, the comp plan is just about the level of service requirement. If there are other, other requirements for specific amenities within subdivisions, that would be part of your subdivision regulations.
Yeah.
And not necessarily the comp plan. But if they were, if you had a subdivision that came in and, and built, if they weren't at a sufficient level of service, then something would have to be done to bring that level of service to, to an acceptable level. Either they, the park is built using impact fees that, that, that that development generates or they do it themselves and dedicate it with the acceptance of the city.
Mr. Ashkin.
I guess I need some guidance. I like this COE plan, by the way. Do, do we have a standard right now? Like if somebody's putting in 50 homes, 100 homes, 1,000 homes, is there a minimum of this, that, or the other thing, pools, tennis courts, things like that? Is that part of our plan at all?
It's not part of the comp plan and it's not part of the comp plan today.
Sorry, I asked a land development code question, not a.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah. So, so the, the, you will see the table of the, you know, one, one tennis court per 1,000 population. And that is an overall requirement. That's not an individual development requirement. So it's, it's saying that if you look at the city as a whole, if we have this many tennis courts, then we meet this, we meet this requirement. So it's not, we're going to make this development meet, provide one tennis court for their 1,000 people. That's not how that specific one works.
Can I address that real quick?
Yeah, go ahead.
Just for quick educational purposes on that, so the National Recreation and Parks Association published these guidelines in the early 90s and everybody jumped on board and put their claws into them and said, oh, this is how we're going to define level of service. But it was always supposed to be guidelines and not standards. And people use the misnomer of calling them standards. Well, things have changed and it doesn't take into account demographics or trends and pickleball, which is hot almost everywhere. And there are just too many things that NRPA has gotten away from even publishing that anymore. You won't find anything current in the past 10 years published on capacity-based standards because some, in Florida, sure, having one pool for 20,000 residents may be relevant, but if you have a really cool pool, no pun intended, you don't need, and you have 40,000 residents, you don't need to have a second one because a pool is a drive to amenity. So they're gone. They are just not even considered anywhere anymore and y'all need to really consider getting rid of them.
Any other question? You have anything else?
That's it.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You've done excellent work and appreciate the presentation. Been educated tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. This time we come to item number four, discussion regarding annexations. Our distinguished attorney.
Thank you, sir. So I think I'm going to start this off and then Mr. Sturgeon and planning staff are here to sort of work on it too. So the item is on your agenda for discussion regarding annexations. And what we wanted to talk to you a little bit about, at least we were asked to by Mr. Sturgeon, was obviously it's a bigger, it's a bigger issue than just the ultimate annexation of properties into the city limits. The issue involves that, currently that area that is outside the city limits and the proposed development of properties in that area and what we have, as you are well aware, what the city council has and prior city councils have had to address over the last several years regarding development outside the city that will ultimately be part of the city. However, the city has, really has limited control over how the development is being, is either being planned or processed currently. So as you're all aware, several years ago, a few years ago, the city entered into a joint planning agreement with the county that was designed to address planning issues, annexation issues, and a process in place to, to address those properties that are outside the city limits, but that were, that were located in the established joint planning area. That agreement has been in place and the city and the county have been working, working along that agreement. However, I think it's staff's consideration or at least thought process that that agreement may need to be revised or reworked to address some issues that had developed since it was adopted in 2014 and really address the process as it has developed and as the council has seen here in this chambers on many occasions. So as, as part of that, as you might recall, the, I think Mr. Ashkin probably remembers this the most, is the, because of the issue that was happening in, in the county outside the city limits and the city's desire to have a little bit more better understanding about what, how projects were being developed, the council changed its policy with regard to water and sewer provisions of services outside the city limits. And a few years ago, the council went and asked, and it was a recommendation of staff, the council agreed that all projects outside the city limits that wanted water and sewer from the city would have to come in front of the city council for a water and sewer agreement, which would give the council at least an earlier opportunity to take a look at some of these projects and, and hopefully work towards addressing some issues that the council thought were of concern. And we've seen several of those and, and those have developed. So we sort of created this sort of de facto process that allowed the council to look at some of these projects outside the city limits before they might ultimately be annexed into the city. Again, as I said, there's a JPA in place and we've talked about it as staff, about how there might be some need to change the JPA and we might need to, to work on the process. Staff and, and Mr. Sturgeon have talked to me in their office about other potential alternatives to a joint planning agreement that might address this issue of how development occurs outside the city limits in areas that might ultimately be part of the city limits eventually. So in the past, we made a suggestion and we are, again, wanted to talk to you about that same suggestion tonight in what's referred to as the inner, an inter-service boundary agreement with the county. It's called, in short, the acronym is ISBA. And it is a process that is established by state statute that basically requires or wants, one, either the county or this, or a municipality asks to invoke that process, basically requires a negotiation process to work towards potentially an ISBA or an inter-service boundary agreement. They are slightly different than planning agreement, I'm sorry, than J- They are slightly different from planning agreement, uh, jo- I'm sorry, than JPAs or joint planning agreements. The focus on a joint planning agreement is more along the lines of planning and the process and what's gonna happen. An ISBA is more along the lines of service issues. How are particular areas gonna be serviced? Uh, what's gonna happen when properties are annexed? What's gonna happen when prop, before properties are annexed, where there might be a need to have joint services provided, or might be an overlap of services between the county and the city? Uh, back in two thousand and sixteen, we presented to the city council, I believe, Mr. Askew, you may have been the only one on the council at the time when we did that. Uh, we did present the suggestion, uh, to initiate the ISBA process. The council at the time did approve a resolution, uh, to initiate the negotiations and discussions on an ISBA, uh, and we did embark on a, uh, on some discussions early on, uh, that were designed to hopefully address some of the issues that the city was experiencing at the time. Unfortunately, I think that process, uh, got a little sidetracked. We had a significant change in the council shortly after that, uh, and, uh, we, and it kinda, it, it didn't really move any, any further, at least it didn't move as far as the city would like it to go. Um, new city manager in place now, uh, obviously, and we've also had a little bit more experience with some of these issues as they develop. Uh, so there, there's that process out there that potentially the council could avail itself of and initiate a, uh, the negotiation process with regard to an ISBA. Now, the way, the way, in our experience, the way that, this is, this has worked, it really has worked where the county and the city would get down and they'd talk about those issues from a service focus. And a lot of service issues are, are, are related or, or, or have obstacles associated with enclaves that exist. And so it has a, has an annexation component to it because obviously the better service, when you eliminate enclaves, enclaves are a, a, an obstacle to, to good service when it comes to a lot of issues. It's very difficult. Law enforcement is the biggest, probably the most, the obvious problem with an enclave area that gets created within a city because obviously the police department has no jurisdiction in unincorporated Osceola County, so folks that are living in an enclave, although their neighbors might be very close by and they might be calling the, the St. Cloud Police Department, the St. Cloud Police Department can't really, has, is gonna have, does not have jurisdiction to provide them service because they need to call the sheriff's office. That's the most obvious one to, to, to address him. Uh, there are other ones that come up that, that are easier to address, and in fact, they have addressed them here in Osceola County, mostly from a fire and an EMS perspective, uh, where the departments will get together and they'll negotiate agreements, service agreements, um, and, uh, be able to do that. Water and sewer is another element that is usually comes in into these ISBAs, but the way the, this, the city's agreement is with Toho and the way that areas are drawn out, that's not necessarily really a service issue for us because everybody kinda gets a good feel about, uh, who's gonna be the service provider when it comes to water and sewer, uh, utilities and, and alike. The biggest part of an ISBA, I think, and one of the, one of the more significant abilities to use an ISBA for the benefit of the city is the ability to address future planning decisions, future development decisions outside the city, the city limits. The ISBA has a provision in the, in the statute, statute that allows for the city and the county to agree that the city can move forward and actually make zoning land use changes with regard to properties currently outside the city so that when those prop, but, which are effective when those properties annex. So in theory, you can get together and, and the city and the county could agree, and the city could draw up a, or at least could actually provide, adopt land use changes to property that's not currently under the jurisdiction of the city, and they could put those in place so that when, when development moves or comes and starts coming through the process, and individuals have to get water and sewer, and individuals need to annex into the city because by code, as you all know, if they want water and sewer, they have to agree to annex into the city, then they would already have the, they would already have the land use in place with regard to their projects so that they would, so the prospective developer would know exactly what they would be, that they would need to get, or what they would have in, from an entitlement perspective at the time they annexed into the city. The ISBA provides that provision, uh, and it's, the statute allows for us to do that, again, with an agreement, uh, with the county through that process to be able to, to do that. Uh, so it offers a little bit more flexibility in a joint planning agreement. It allows for the expansion of, or at least a focus to be on service, uh, and to address it. It requires the identification of an ISBA area. Uh, in the previous resolution, the ISBA area was essentially the same as the joint planning area, um, or which is kind of essentially is the future annexation area, future municipal boundaries of the city, which was determined years ago. Uh, but it, it allows for, to be able to address a lot of these issues, and it also allows for there to be a little more discussion between the county and the city, uh, as to the process of how development is going to be reviewed, approved, and, you know, potentially implemented when it comes to a, a service perspective. Um, so I think Mr. Sturgeon wanted us to talk to you a little bit about is this as an option to move forward. Um, we, in the, uh, as we did in two thousand and sixteen, we did recommend to the city council at the time that this be a process that the city council, uh, initiate. Uh, it's a staff-level process with the idea that ultimately it would come back to the city council if we were able to negotiate an, uh, an agreement with the county, and the county, county commission would approve it, and the city council would approve it, and then both entities would incorporate the ISBA agreement into their comp plans. Uh, so essentially it would become, uh, the, you know, become the law of the, of the property as it relates to whatever's contained in the ultimately agreed-upon ISBA. Um, we think it gives options. The other thing we like about it from a city's perspective, frankly, is that it, it's a statutorily required process. Uh, so counties are, eh, once, in a county, the way the process works is the city would approve an initiating resolution and send it over to the county, and the county gets to say yes or no. Um, I think it was put in place under the theory that most counties are gonna say, yes, we're happy to come to the table, but there are parameters about, uh, what items need to be discussed and how the negotiations are gonna be dealt, and there's, and it's all stat, the, the framework is set by statute, so it sort of keeps the process moving, um, and hopefully you could ultimately reach a, uh, res, uh, an agreement that both the county and the city can, uh, agree to and present, from a staff perspective, and then present it back to the elected bodies. Uh, so I think it's our intention to deal with it. It's listed again as, as, on your agenda as a discussion regarding annexation. When we did this last time, when we went through the process last time, we did, we did talk about phasings of annexations to address some of the issues, and I would fully expect that if we were going to initiate this process, that that would again be part of the discussion to basically deal with it, cause the ultimate goal, as I said earlier, would be to eliminate these pockets or these enclaves that stand as obstacles to the efficient service for the citizens of this area. And that's the ultimate goal of any, of the, of this agreement, so we wouldn't walk away from that, that process, and that would be an integral part of it.
That's exactly, I'd like to echo what Mr. Manzera said. That's exactly my plan if we go down this road, is to make sure we have that phased annexation for both sides, both the county and the city. It's difficult to plan for the future, and like I said, my expertise, as you know, is in public safety, and that, that part of the ISBA negotiations went really well. It's, we started getting into the other areas where we had some difficulty, but I think we have a good relationship with the county, and I think we can have those discussions now and really define what that transition looks like if we decide to annex in, in phases. It allows them to plan where they're gonna build things or take over different services, or we're gonna take over services for them. So it's just a better planning model for me to move forward with. Andre? Do you have anything to add? Thank you. Thank you, Andre.
Questions? Councilmember Thien.
I was gonna let somebody else go first. Um, okay, I got a couple. I got a couple. So I know one of the things, since I've been on council, Mr. Askew is always like, get the dirt. We want the dirt. Annex the dirt. And so the IS, ISBA?
Yes, ma'am.
ISBA is a way, I know that was something with our previous city manager talked about it, but if you're saying, I mean, I think when we've been talking about getting the dirt, it's about getting the impact fees off of the dirt, so if you phase annex, you don't get the impact fees. I mean, eh, maybe you do, but I mean, when you're saying, I'm thinking like, okay, so we go and we change the, the land use, and then a development comes, and in the future sometime, they would get annexed into the city, but I think the whole goal of it was wanting to get the impact fees off of the properties, which we wouldn't, right?
Well, it depends on, it depends on the phasing, and it depends on the properties, and it depends on the phasing, and it depends on where they are in the development process.
So that's one of my concerns. The other one is, eh, and I, I don't really know, I'm gonna pretend to understand the implications of what I'm about to say, and, but every time I look at the map that has the, um, our JPA, the future limits of the city of St. Cloud, I think, man, that is gigantic. And so, eh, you know, I'm, like, we're talking about this, but I think we also need to have the conversation, is should we look into shrinking the limits of the city of St. Cloud, the potential future limits of the city of St. Cloud, and like, what are the ramifications? Positives and negatives, you know? I know we've got our water issues, so that falls into that one eighty service boundary as well, and if they're outside the city, they pay us a twenty percent bump, so I'm always kinda like, do we really want them to come into the city? Cause it pays us more money when they're outside the city. Um, you know, police and fire, the parks are wrecked, garbage, like, everything, it just gets expanded and stretched and stretched and stretched. You know, should we really try to like, pull the limits of the city and the JPA in? And I don't know if there's some expert who can analyze it and tell you the positives and negatives to the city. I know I had mentioned it to the previous city manager, and, um, he had mentioned something like, well, that's how we get all of our money, and I'm like, well, that's a flawed system, cause eventually you're gonna, you're gonna bump up to the ceiling, and if you can't, if you can't pay for your services, I just feel like that boundary is huge, and should we look at pulling it in a little bit? I don't know how the other council members feel about that.
And if I could, just give a little bit more history on the boundary itself, and I don't disagree with you, and that's obviously a planning decision and a council decision to deal with it. But the boundary came from years ago, several years ago, when the county and the city were actually in a dispute over an annexation. And the annexation was resolved, the, the, the lawsuit over the annexation of a piece of property was resolved by the county and the city agreeing that the ultimate boundaries of the city would not be any larger than this.
Mm-hmm.
And we, we basically drew, at the time, we drew a map, it was very consistent with the one eighty area, and we drew, we, they, we literally drew the map as part of an agreement that the ultimate boundaries of city limits wouldn't get any bigger than this. So I don't think it was intended that that would actually be the city limits, the ultimate city limits of the city, but I think at the time, the staff and folks involved were saying, well, we don't wanna restrict ourselves too much.
Sure.
For the growth, so we went as large as we really could, and if you look at the map, it's, it, it's geographically, it's, it's sort of set up to follow the one eighty area, and it, you know, it deals with areas that we thought, that were, at that point, we thought, well, yeah, this would logically be, could be part of the city someday, um, and, uh, you know, based on natural barriers and things like that. So I don't think it was ever really intended to be the, you know, really the city's gonna grow that far. Um, I think if you, if you probably, if you probably took the square miles that are located in that area, it's probably, probably pretty large for, you know, for a city that's not in a, you know, a really confined urban area like Jacksonville or Tampa, so, uh, so, uh, it's, uh, so.
But are there, but are there not also advantages that, that it's as large as it is, at least we begin, can have a say so, or theoretically, uh, on what happens in areas that would be impacting us? If you make it real small, then you're limiting, uh.
That's true.
Even possibility of that discussion.
Well, well, and, but you, you know, you could, you could negotiate an area, and there are some of these agreements that are out there between counties and cities, where there is a ultimate, what's called an ultimate annexation area, where everybody agrees that that's part of, that's ultimately gonna be in the city limits, and then there's an outer circle around that area that includes other properties that we're not so sure are gonna be in the city, but they're gonna have some sort of impact on the city because those folks might be going to parks, or they may be doing things like that, so that the city should participate in it. Then, and I've seen agreements where they actually create a, a, a process where development that gets, that's in that outer circle area is actually reviewed by the city staff anyway, and the county is asked to take into consideration certain things that might be done. So there's a, there's not, there's a lesser review, but there's still a review in the outer circle.
So, I mean, I've mentioned this to the city manager, is that, you know, I want St. Cloud to be like the most awesome town around, city around, and everybody wants to live here, and we have amazing services, and, um, you know, the best police and fire like we do now, you know, we've got great services, and, and my concern is, is we stretch and stretch and stretch and stretch, you know, the, being able to maintain that level of service. So I, I mean, personally, I would like an expert in these things to analyze our system and, and come up with like a real, true, here's the future city boundary, because to me, I would think it'd be impossible to plan and budget, and when we don't really know, is it gonna be here, or is it gonna be here? Is it gonna be this big, or is it gonna be that big? Like, where are the fire stations gonna go? Like, I know there is issues, you know, if like, the county needed to put a fire station, and it's in an area that we're gonna maybe annex, then they're, you know, they're not gonna wanna put something in there if we're gonna annex their fires. I, I don't know. I would just like us to look into kinda shrinking the limits. I like the idea of, hey, here's our city limits, and here's our area of interest outside the city limits, and work in agreement with the county, that we could have something, you know, a review or a say in the area outside, immediately outside the city, but with all of the issues that we have with, and even with the water, I've mentioned that before, like, maybe we need to shrink the one eighty service area, cause we're gonna go into the Cypress Lakes, and then they're saying that's not even enough water. So I just wanted to see what the other council members were thinking about that.
Mr. Askew.
Thank you, mayor. Um, yeah, I think eventually, you, you know, on the JPA, the beauty of taking on new growth and new dirt, um, is that houses like mine, where I pay a hundred and fifty-two dollars to the city of St. Cloud on my property tax, you know, it'll only go up three percent every year, is I'm basically a suck to the system. I'm basically taking free stuff.
Free loan.
You know, from the city. Now, if you go over to Turtle Creek, or you go to someplace that's just been built in there, their property tax of, is a little bit more. We have great planners on both sides of the county and the city of St. Cloud. When you're building these new developments on the outside of the city, this new growth is astronomically more property tax than what we're dealing with right now, especially the grid. Um, I don't, well, the grid's turned over so much in the past three years, it's, I'm just totally amazed that people are buying a little bungalow for two hundred, a thousand dollars, but, so I think that, I think the difference here now is that the planning, I mean, it's really the, the county, it's being run by, by planning and the, and big scheme of things, and so is the city. If, if we plan this out correctly, and you got your Baldwin Parks and things like that, then I think it would help the city. Now, if we're just throwing homes out there, and we're not doing any commercial, yeah, I get it, yeah. If, eh, you definitely need more commercial to help out in, um, the taxation of the city, I think, in the long run. Or we're just gonna be all housing. And I understand the county's point where they want eight units per acre, and we want four units per acre, and, I mean, you could do the mathematics, uh, the density, you're gonna definitely make more money if that's the only thing you're looking for, but if you only have four houses, the den, that density's not gonna have as much of an impact to the city's coffers than having eight units per acre. I mean, that's where some of the differences I see coming from a layman's term, you know? I'm not an engineer or anything.
Well, I mean, the, on the, to go back to the grid point, I mean, yeah, you are limited in your, um, the tax on your house until it sells.
Right. And that's the big change, especially the grid area, yeah.
Cause the new person is not gonna pay, you know, eighty thousand dollars, they're gonna pay two hundred thousand dollars.
All right. This is exciting times, I mean, the, the way that this could be built out, and everyone has great ideas, um, throughout the entire county and the city, that it just seems like if we, if we do this correctly, we both get along great, then we're gonna have a great city, a great county. I think we have it already, but, um, or I wouldn't be here. Um, I think that that's the part that I think we're missing, is that I, when things come in front of us and we're, I call it the parade, they're, they're talking about their water, it's already approved, I don't want anybody to have to come in front of us, just because we don't like, they got five units per acre, we want four. Uh, yeah, how do you change that, where it's, the developer knows exactly what they have to build, and where their spot's gonna be, and when they come in front of us, we clap our hands, approve it, and off they go?
Well, I, I, we were obviously involved in the, in the initial discussions and negotiation of the joint planning agreement. I think it was always intended as part of that, and we never got there, is that the county and the city would agree to some special development standards within the joint planning area. Uh, that's typically what ends up happening with the, with a joint planning agreement, eventually, that they agree, so that the county code may say something, the city code may say something, but inside that JPA area, or even if you did an ISBA. but inside that JPA area, or even if you did an ISBA, the ISBA area, there would be a special set of development regulations that would apply, that would deal with issues like density and things like that, so.
It, it just seems, I guess, strange to me, and I don't understand the dynamic even being up here for a while. It seems like if your, your code in the, the county, and I understand they're way bigger than us, but it seems like we can come to an agreement that we're gonna build it this way here in the city, the county's gonna build it this way in the, in the JPA. Can we meet up with, and meet someplace in the middle and say, yeah, this is gonna be the standard? And then I would assume that a lot of the challenges would tend to go away. Now, annexing in or going out to the edge of your JPA, that's something we're not gonna deal with. It's gonna be probably off in the future, unless we do some kind of mass annexation or something like that, but, I don't know. Just throwing it out there.
Mr. Trace.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm still, I still don't have a grasp on what the actual need is and what the actual problem is. We have a JPA, I, I think it works pretty well. We haven't set standards that, like you said, the overlay, there's other municipalities. Claremont, before they did their JPA, or before they did their ISBA, I think had JPA standards that if you run that overlay, you had different standards, so those were worked out over there. My biggest concern with an ISBA is then you kind of allow non-contiguous annexations and picking and choosing. And, you know, this council might think of the impacts of annexing one piece, you know, far outside the city. But, you know, maybe future council, uh, councils might not think of the impacts of doing something like that. And you just get disjointed growth and even more sprawl by allowing just, you know, annexation anywhere in the ISBA area, instead of having to be contiguous and, um, kind of staging growth as it goes. You know, it, it might be one of those that we just have to regularly update the, the JPA as things change over, you know, it's a 20-year agreement, we're, what, five or six years into it? On the new update, that regularly update it and have, uh, meetings, sit downs, coordination between the city and county. I just, I, I don't know what the problem is that we're trying to fix, um, so, I don't know if anyone has.
Well, I can, maybe staff can talk about practically why they think we need to work on either the JPA or another form of agreement. I'll just comment, the non-contiguous annexation piece that is, is allowable under the IS, under the ISBA statute is only based on an agreement between the county and the city. So, uh, if the county felt like, for whatever reason, or even the city didn't want it, and the county felt like they didn't wanna agree, then it's not gonna happen. So it has to be agreed upon to get to that point.
Okay. Cause right now, utilities end up being a part of a barrier, barrier to entry to, to some growth, right? If they don't have water and sewer, they really can't develop it, so that is helping combat some of the, the sprawl. And then like Deputy Mayor Matheny said, some of the, I don't think some of the annexations will end up paying for themselves because of the, the loss of the extra revenue from water and sewer, and then providing the, the fire and police service. Certain existing communities, if we start annexing, you know, up, up Narcusi Road into the manor, I don't know if they'd actually pay for themselves for the services that they, um, need.
But that would be up to us to decide.
Yep.
And, uh, you know, again, I'm not sure I fully understand the pros and the cons of this, but anything that gets us at the table, communicating and talking, working together with the county certainly seems wise. To me, it just would increase that, but that potential certainly would seem like a good recommendation.
I, I was just gonna add to what Mr. Trace said, I totally agree, that's not, my intent is to do the non-contiguous. I think that's where it kinda got sidetracked last time. Mr. Helfenberg had a different vision than I have. I just wanna have a process, we can talk about the orderly transition of services. And I think the county wants that too, because like you said, just from the fire station, that's a great example. They need a fire station up the road here on Narcusi, they're not gonna build it, no one in two years, we're gonna annex it. That makes sense, you know, but how do we transition to that? Do we do a joint station for a while, I mean, just some ideas that we could talk about?
Yeah, definitely.
So that's kinda what we're looking for.
And could we do, accomplish that with the interlocal agreements we have now? Or modifying those, instead of going through a whole different growth management practice?
Well, I was approached by the county manager to renegotiate JPA. I just, I just think, um, this process, it really talks about the services, I think is what we need to talk about. How do we transition those services? So that's, that's what my vision is, based on services and service level.
Well, I guess we're not, we just wanted to have a discussion tonight with the council and see where we are. And we recognize that it might be difficult, based on this overview, to figure out all the pros and cons. One of the things that the county and the city staff do meet regularly, in fact, we have a meeting tomorrow, right? And, uh, and, and we certainly can discuss the process issues with them, with, on the staff level. We certainly, you know, you don't wanna, you don't wanna try to initiate a negotiation process with someone who doesn't wanna participate, cause you're not gonna get anywhere, you know? And so, um, I'm not saying they don't wanna participate, but if, if we have a, if there's a different venue, a different avenue that might get us to, to a better working relationship in, in an agreement, whether it's a joint planning agreement, or whether it's an ISBA, or whether it's a series of different interlocal agreements, then we certainly were amenable to getting that done.
Well, it seems to me that if, you know, our staff is amenable to this, and the county is amenable to it, and feels like it would, uh, help us to have a better working relationship, we ultimately have to prove whether it's gonna be done or not.
Yes.
I would certainly like to encourage the council to say, hey, bring us back more information, and the pros and the cons, and, uh, but we're open to anything that would, uh, improve our relationship and improve our future. I would think.
And I, I do think there are items of the JPA that need to be updated, need to be modified, because as we go on, um, things change and, you know, paths change. So, um, definitely open to that, just changing the whole growth management strategy just kinda gives me a little bit uneasy.
I'll, I'll agree with what Mr. Trace said, that I'm concerned in the future. You know, one election changes a lot of things. You know, so we're all saying the same thing, like, oh, we'll annex in an orderly fashion, but what if he's not here, we're not here, I mean,
And I guess if-
We know Dan will be here, so he'll be controlling things.
He's telling everybody, I got a 13-year-old.
And, and if-
Actually, he's 14.
If, if there's sticking points of development standards that are, are at odds between city and county code, if, if it's the city code that needs to be updated, I think we should talk about it. And if we need to try to have that overlay type, um, discussion for, in the JPA of, you know, having a, a city standard, whether it be, we already have the utility stuff handled, so, you know, parks or whatever other things would happen, then let's have that discussion.
I'm not sure where we're landing here.
Well, I think we, again, one, one of this, we wanted to broach this idea with, with the city council, so that we can talk some more with staff and figure out a path forward. And we'll work with staff aggressively to, and then work with the county to try to work towards some of the discussion items we had here, and then figure out the best path to do it.
May I object to that?
No. It, maybe, is there, like, you can have a chart, JPA one side, pros and cons kinda, and then the ISBA on the other going, can you do this?
Do that.
Yes, can you do that? No?
Well, in our experience, there isn't anything you can't have in the JPA that you can, that can't be in an inter-service boundary agreement. However, from, it hasn't really been litigated, but if you follow the statutes, there are, there are more opportun, there's more options with the ISBA than there are with the JPA process. So the ISBA allows you to go further. So you basically could sweep everything that's in the existing JPA and put it into a new agreement. And then there's some more options that you potentially could have. And Mr. Sturgeon is right, and, and obviously the council, and for the reasons Mr. Trace said, council may not be so inclined to deal with this non-contiguous annexation piece. But that was one of the, the, the thought processes when we did this process back in 2016, was to potentially, potentially deal with that, or address them. So, that's one of the, that's for, that's an example of an option that's available in the ISBA, but it's not as available through the JPA process.
Mr. Trace.
And I think one of the items I think that might be the concern, and it's, it's one of my concerns as well, is once development, um, down Casimy Park Road gets west of the turnpike, you only have a certain number of crossings with a turnpike, providing service, whether it's the city or the county providing the service, it becomes a little more difficult for police and fire. So just regardless, ISBA, JPA, annex, not, I think that's just a, a, a very pointed conversation we have to have between the city and county of how do we provide level of service and safety for the residents that are on the west side of the turnpike, down Casimy Park Road.
And, and again, what the ISBA potentially also is, is just thought of another. Mr. Sturgeon mentioned that we worked on a fire service agreement, uh, basically an automatic aid agreement, right?
Yes.
Right? Typically, you, those will get put in place as part of an ISBA agreement, and not a standalone agreement, uh, so that there is a tie between the service that's being provided and the ultimate annexation, uh, of the particular municipality. So in this case, when we went through the process, the, that interlocal agreement regarding the fire service was done fairly quickly. And, but, uh, we would have rather seen that incorporated into a full ISBA, as opposed to a standalone agreement. Just so that you could, you could track the annexation pieces associated with it and the water and sewer, cause that often has, has to deal with it too, in terms of like, you know, fire protection and water service and things like that, so. But again, I think we got enough direction from the council, yeah.
I just wanted to go back, I, I think what Deputy Mayor talked about has a lot of merit. And, you know, what, what does our reasonable boundaries look like? I think maybe that's, if I get some direction, to get somebody to look at that. Cause one of the things I'm bringing back next council meeting is a staffing study, and that's gonna be reflective on how big our city's gonna be over the next 10, 15, 20, 25 years. So I think it'd be behoove us to maybe have somebody look at, what is it, what does the city really look like in 10, 15, 20 years? You know, what's the potential and what's reasonable that we can provide a level of service? Cause I have no desire to take annexed properties, we can't provide municipal services. That's why people wanna come into a city, to provide municipal services. And some people choose to live in a county, because they wanna be more rural. So I just like, I think that has a lot of merit, and I'd like to have a little bit more discussion on that, or some direction to get somebody to look at that.
I say yes.
She did about 40 minutes.
You need a lawyer?
No, I think we're good, we're gonna, except we have some meetings tomorrow with the county and the staff, and they're here listening. So, um, we'll, you know, we'll, we'll have some more discussions on, moving forward.
Are we done?
Yes.
Then we go to item number five, discussion regarding sign ordinance code issues. Who has the courage to address that?
Brought in the eighteen.
Good evening, Trevor Bedford, Senior Planner. The sign code, um, we recently adopted in last November, has had some, some issues, um, some concerns from business owners. One of the main concerns is regarding what's, what we've been referring to as string lights. These are typically the lights that go, um, frequently, we see them around windows. They're usually LED lights, or they outline some other parts of a business. The current code that was adopted prohibits these lights as, used as an outline. The existing lights were given a 90-day amortization period, which began in November. Several businesses received code enforcement citations, and in April, several business owners came to city council to express their concerns. At an earlier workshop, staff was requested to hold an educational workshop with, um, some of these business owners. That workshop was held on August 20th, and several comment cards were received. A lot of, some of the common themes in these comment cards were that the business owners were unhappy with the new restrictions on their, the strip lighting. Several business owners requested meetings with city council members. A few were unhappy with restrictions on EVM signage. Some business owners said they felt that additional lighting helped their smaller businesses to be noticed. A few compromises were suggested. These are a couple of the compromises on the strip lighting. One is to allow strip lighting, but prohibit the flashing lights. Some people felt that the, the flashing lights was the real issue, and that the lights may not have been as, as harmful as if they were flashing, if they're just a stationary light. Some suggested single colors, so that it's, it's a little bit less distracting than multiple colors. And others suggested that, um, we could allow existing lights to remain as non-conforming signage, but prohibit future lights. Another topic that's, have, have raised concerns lately is EVM signage. These are the electronic variable message signs, they change copy. These, um, we currently have hour of operation restrictions on these, so they have to be turned off at night, unless the business is open to the public. We've had some concerns from business owners that if their business closes at 5:00 and nobody's around, then they have to turn their sign off at 5:00. They're, they're a little bit concerned about that. The, the code would allow them to stay on till later, I believe it's 9:00 PM, but if they don't have a timer, they really can't turn it off after they're gone. Some attendees also questioned if there were, questioned the safety concerns related to brightness, dwell time, and animated images. So I just wanna go over some potential options, and, uh, obviously, if there's any other, there are more options than this. These are just a few quick suggestions to, to start the conversation. For the string lights, some of the potential options, the prohibition could be removed entirely from the code. We could allow existing lights to remain as non-conforming signage. We could understand which string lights are acceptable and which are not, and try to rewrite the code a little bit to clarify. We could do nothing, leave the code as is. We just need a little bit of direction on that. And then for EVM signage, again, we could leave the code as is. We could replace hour of operation requirements with brightness requirements, so that rather than saying at 10 o'clock it has to be turned off, we could say it has to be a certain level above ambient light at all times. We could allow the current, any non-conforming signs to remain existing under whatever code was adopted when they were permitted. Again, we just need direction to move forward with this. So I'd like to just open the discussion.
You're first. You're first one.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Hi. So, um, I drove around town last night and took some photographs, I think they have them ready up on the screen.
What is it Vegas, or what is, what is that?
No. So, okay, I'm gonna start with your first bullet point, which is the string lights, is what we're calling them. So I know I heard from, first of all, I know we had a, a few business owners come here that were upset about the code enforcement, um, notices. I think we have a really nice, well-written, we worked on that code for six months. I think we beat it to death. I was actually told, Lynette, you're beating a dead horse on my EVM comments at one time. But I, you know, I feel like we really, um, worked through everything. And so, you know, to have just a couple business owners come about these lights, and then we just stopped what we were doing, I was very disappointed with that, because I felt like we had really thoughtfully gone through the process. I don't know what the appropriate term is for the lights that go around the windows and we're calling them string lights, but I know like, one of the concerns I heard from like, um, Hunter Arm, for example, has the nice, like, Edison bulb, which I feel like is a, a nice feature. These, to me, looks like we're on Cimarron Boulevard, which to me, I want like, I want high quality, high aesthetics. I want the town to be beautiful, you know, and you drive down the street, and it's, you know, pawn shops and liquor stores and barber shops have these lights around the window. I, I don't know that there's any economic development study that shows that this brings business to anybody. And I think in this day and age, frankly, if I needed a pawn shop and I didn't know where it was, I would go on my phone, go to Google, like, pawn shops around me. Or if I needed a barber and I didn't know where a barber was, I'd be like, barber shops around me. I don't wanna hurt the businesses, but I also think we're trying to attract higher-end clientele into the city. And to me, one person's, you know, vision, this is not the vision that we want for the city. And I have several pictures, I don't know if they wanna click through a couple of them. You know, like, this, this is not attractive. So I have a video for the other item, that they got queued up. But that's just my personal opinion, I, I thought we really thoughtfully went through this ordinance when we- I thought we really thoughtfully went through this ordinance when we crafted it. We didn't feel like that these lights were a, first of all, they weren't permitted through the city, first of all. And then I think it's one of those things, once one person does it, then it's just like, oh, I'm going to put lights around my window, and you know, there's not a lot of money tied up in this. I know like we put a lot of thought into the electronic message boards that, you know, that was a big investment, and it was permitted through the city. These were not permitted through the city. So my preference would be to leave the code as is and have these removed. I don't, I think the clock probably needs a restart on the notice of like, because we put a pin in it, but just want to show you guys, you know, some pictures here driving through town. I just don't think, I'm like kind of embarrassed when I have a friend that's not from here and we drive down 192, and this is like what you see. So my, I'll, do you want me to do both of my topics?
Can I talk about this part first? So just to clarify, you're suggesting that we leave it as is, so we prohibit them? And but there were some suggestions about some compromises that may address what you just said, because you mentioned Hunter Arms, for instance, by the way, Andre Anderson, planning director, mentioned that the Edison lights were attractive. So the question is, if these businesses were to use, say, we specify Edison Light as an example?
I mean, I don't, I think that's not enhancing, like this isn't enhancing anything.
Well.
And I have a nice list here.
Okay, but I guess what I'm getting at is, rather than say outlining the windows with the lights, but if they were to highlight their building features, for instance, such as what Hunter Arms has done, is that something that you are amenable to? That's what I'm trying to get, get at.
Well, I don't, I don't think that would look good either. I mean aesthetically, like if each individual, I don't know.
I guess what I'm trying to get at is, there's ways to use lighting as an architectural feature rather than as signage, and that's what I'm trying to get, make the distinction.
So what would you consider this?
That's signage.
Okay.
That's what I'm saying. So there's a difference. If you're trying to use lighting as a, as to highlight the building or to use as an architectural feature versus using chasing lights or multicolored lights or so on. So that's why I was trying to kind of just make a distinction.
Yeah, I mean, I guess it's one of those things like, you know, it's, it's a judgment call. Like to me, this is not aesthetically pleasing, and these businesses aren't even open, so why do these lights need to be on?
Right.
I mean, so if, I guess I would be amenable to crafting it that the Edison bulb, you know, kind of like the string lights we did in downtown on New York, if there's, if it is enhancing the building, but it's not, you know, just, I'm going to rim the window and leave them on 24 hours a day. But string lights, LED strip lights are prohibited in Apopka, Castleberry, Cape Canaveral, Cocoa, Mount Dora, Longwood, Winter Garden, Winter Park. They are not allowed. So.
How would you make a decision on what was acceptable and not acceptable?
So the easiest way is to just prohibit them, similar to those other cities she just highlighted. In that, you'd avoid that discretion of trying to decide, well, this is nice and this is not nice, just prohibit them as it's in the code right now, as opposed to trying to make a judgment call. But we do have an architectural standard code that we can address architectural features, but that's when you're designing a building or a building for the first time and we were going to require certain standards. That's slightly different, but that has to do with enhancing the building versus a commercial building and an after the fact wanting to get a sign, because anything that brings attention to a building is considered a sign, a mark, a color, lights, whatever. So there's a distinction. And as she rightly said, those were not necessarily permitted as part of the sign permit, it was permitted, it was just installed.
Mr. Trace?
I pretty much echo Deputy Mayor Matheny's comments. We just have to make sure that, you know, is it the color that we don't like? Is it the style of light, LED versus incandescent? And then on Andre's point about architectural features, are you talking about like gas station awnings, how they have kind of the lighting kind of across the top? Is that something that we prohibit or not? So that's something we'd have to make sure that we specify, because that's really a light strip, it's more of a box, but it's got, you know, fluorescent lights in it, and it accentuates the architecture of the building. So I think these are not needed in the city. All of these businesses have adequate signage, and a lot of them have window clings that cover a majority of the window anyway, which is probably a bigger safety concern than anything. But yeah, I don't, I'm not a big fan of the LED light strips.
Mr. Askew?
I would agree with those, those engineers on my sides here. Yeah, and I'm not even sure where that is. I thought I knew every single.
That's Rife's Plaza.
Oh, okay. Yeah, that window that's totally covered, two of them, is that, I guess, is that part of a Thrifty Mark or something like that? Okay. Yeah, I got drilled into it, my shop, they all came in. They're proposing that they turn them off when they leave, some things like that. I'm not a big fan of LED. I remember when I was growing up, if you saw an LED, you're like, wow, I'd really love to have one of those. Now it's just, they're everywhere. And they're hard to look at, so when I go down the road, that's the last thing I want to do is look at that, because it seems to hurt my eyes, so, yeah, I'm okay with it.
And I'll support that also. My only issue is make sure we give them enough time, give them ninety days to conform.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And what are the penalties? Just code enforcement?
It's code enforcement, it's potentially a fine up to $250 a day.
Can, would it be possible, can we have code enforcement come up, maybe get her concerns? Sorry, Terry, you just happen to be out there, so.
She's sort of quiet in our meeting.
She's undercover, you spotted her.
Yeah, exactly. Terry Spartan, City of St. Cloud Code Enforcement Officer. My opinion on that is whatever you say is fine, we don't have a problem enforcing it, but just remember, we're going to have kickback, and they're going to go to the special magistrate. We can give them the ninety days, and we'll just fine them. Not a problem.
I mean, there's not a huge investment in some of these, I mean.
From what I was told, especially at the nail shop, because I know them well, well, I have my nails done there, they said they spent $1,200 on their lights. The beauty shop said they spent a thousand.
Wow.
I don't know. I'm just going by what they tell me.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Matheny?
So if we go the way it sounds like we're going to go, maybe we should give them six months to get this on, get them down?
I think the ninety days would be perfect.
Ninety days, okay, perfect. The other thing I wanted to say is, if we do, and I don't know what, how everybody, I think everybody's on the same page, like that the cafe lights we're okay with, as long as they add to the building, but we need to put some language in there so that we don't have some crazy like, oh, we're going to do lightning bolt, you know, cafe lights or whatever, like there needs to be, they need to be clear, they need to be white, they need to be, you know, whatever.
Just be very careful, because when you say cafe lighting, they're going to do the same thing, but with cafe lighting. You're going to staple a cafe light all the way around the window.
No, because that's not, this is not adding to the architectural, and they have to get a permit for it. They can't just go willy-nilly. Okay.
I mean, won't they do that? They'll just, they'll put cafe lighting around the window?
Unless it's in the code, they're going to push it to the other limit. So whatever the code says, we need to be very specific, and then that makes our job easier when we take it to the special magistrate. There's no argument, it's in black and white, so that makes it our, all of us to do our job correctly.
Can you work with code enforcement and just make sure we've got whatever language that she needs to be able to?
We will.
Stand our ground on that? If we need to tweak something? Because I know there was some issue initially when we passed it, I think there was some difficulty in, you know how you do your best to try to make things clear, but then it's, there's always kind of ambiguity in there.
Well, and as you mentioned earlier, city's been, and staff and the council have been working on this for a long time.
Long time.
And every time you work on something like this for a long time and things get moved around, then the language gets a little bit more blurry. And so we really, with the good direction from the council tonight, we can work on the language and we'll make it as clean and clear as possible. And if we take some cases in front of the special magistrate and it ends up that they're problematic, then we'll go back and tweak it.
So I think the direction is, these are prohibited as we have in there, Andre's going to work on some language. Even if there are lights of any kind of nature, they need to turn off. You know, like if we allow cafe lighting in the architecture, I think they need to turn off, like the businesses are closed, the lights need to turn off, unless it's part of their lighting package. But, awesome. My next, my next topic?
Wait a second, we're not done yet. Mr. Askew?
Thank you, Mayor. There, so I am trying to think, what would they do? And, okay, we're going to pull these off, I'm going to turn on my store and I'm going to put this giant light blast from the back of my store through, because there's some loopholes in our, in our code. You can put a sign in your window, as long as it's not touching your sign, your window? It's not a sign, is it? See what I mean?
I, well, no.
There is a distance, it has to be away from the window. I don't remember the exact distance, but there's a distance.
Yeah, well, I'm just saying. So we're going to take that away. I'm in agreement with that. I don't, really don't think that, I don't think that that draws my attention to it. I never got my nails done there, so. Should we hit the floor, or?
Okay, do you need further?
No, I think we're good.
Is there language in the sign ordinance that, I mean, to your point, that prohibits them shining anything from inside their store through their window out?
Safety.
For safety? Is it, maybe you need to put some language in there to that effect, like?
Why, they're figuring that out? I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor.
We'll look into that.
I just know, like, what if they put the whirly lights and the flashing lights and that stuff back?
So inside their, a commercial building, are you allowed to turn your lights on and off all night long? I'm just trying to, I'm really trying to think, how in the world are they going to get around to this?
Like flick them off?
Yeah, like it turns on, turns off, the lights dim, high, dim low. They actually make bulbs now that you could program that'll do a whole show for you, one bulb, and that's the next start. And then, how do you address that? It's now inside the building, it's not a safety issue, but it could be possibly worse than that.
When it comes to things like lighting and this stuff, we're, we are all to a certain amount dependent on technology, and as technology develops, we, and when things are created that do not, are not consistent with the city's desire regarding its community, then we're going to have to address those and deal with it. I don't think that's necessarily been a problem yet here in St. Cloud. But if it certainly is, we will have to look at it if the council feels like, obviously, the council doesn't have an issue with traditional backlighting signs that advertise a store as long as they're permanent and all that. It's this other stuff to draw attention to the facility that seems to be the biggest, biggest concern, so we'll just keep an eye on that stuff.
It's competing light. So you put a light in, the nail place has to put a light in, the next person puts a light in, and it starts this, this whole process.
Yeah.
And these guys are the fallout of the EVM signs. That's really how this whole thing seemed to start, was a sign that.
But, but truthfully, it started, yes, you're right, but part of it started because of the technology associated with EVM signs and the ability to make these lights bright and adjust them and program them and be cost efficient so that more places can have them. And that's what, that's what's going to evolve with any of these lighted signs. We're just going to have to have the code try to keep up with as much as possible, depending on what the council wants.
So these cafe lightings do, so would like Hunter Arms Hotel or even these guys, would they have to pull a permit and get it approved that way? And how would we do a cafe lighting? Do we, we're going to drawl up a whole? I mean, you're talking new buildings, but this building, the way that you expressed that how you're going to write that, it doesn't look like these would be a part of that at all, unless they ran cafe lighting all the way down and partnered together and?
Well, I come up here just to say, we're not sure how we're going to do it just yet, but a thought that came to mind is our exterior lighting standards to basically, the dark sky, you can't have light trespassing and so on. So that's also probably going to come into play in that you can't have these bright lights shining anywhere just to illuminate your building, because that's will be in opposition to our exterior lighting standards. So we'll have to look at that again to make sure that we tighten that up. So that would also be a mechanism for preventing things that you just described, where somebody puts a bright light in and shines it out just to be bright, because that's also going to be a problem. So we'll definitely look at that as well.
Oh, boy.
Trust me, you gotta make a rule for it.
Right.
So code as is?
Would, are we addressing the EVM sign?
Well, yeah, but I just want to wrap this one up first.
Well, I thought we did. So leave the code as is, but then add an allowance to do the cafe lights, but that will require a permit, they would have to add to the architectural integrity of the building, not just lighting the building, and then he was going to put some standards in there for what they were going to look like, what color and, and all that, and I think there was something else. We're still giving them ninety days, oh, and they have to turn it off?
When they leave.
When they're closed.
I'm good with the turning off, close thing.
Okay.
Next topic?
Sure.
So I don't know if they have my video up, but I drove by the sign by my house last night and took a little video, just so you could enjoy the brightness of it. Hopefully I'm not saying anything in the video, because I was on my Bluetooth. I was like, shh, don't say anything, I want to record a video. But, you know, I'll just kind of tell you my story while this, we're waiting for this, but I, this again, I felt like we spent a lot of time deliberating, and I didn't get what I wanted on it, but I thought we, I thought we ended up with a compromise that kind of worked for everybody. Yeah, there it is. There's the sign, look how bright that is, it's brighter than the headlights of the cars coming. And the question I had was, the parking lot lights at that car wash are so bright, like look how bright that is, I mean, is that, does that mean dark sky?
No. The, yes, they're.
I thought we had a dark sky.
They're in process.
Well, that, I feel sorry for whoever's like right by that, it's just a short little video, because I kept it short so I could email it. But you can just see how bright it is, I mean, and it's changing images pretty frequently, but yeah, it's so bright, I was like, geez Louise, I mean, that's, I feel like our ordinance was thoughtfully crafted, and we took into consideration the fact that these two that exist, that are most of the problems and complaints, that that was a lot of money and they were permitted, so we tried to like compromise with how we were going to regulate them. I know that the two sign owners have shown up, and the one sign owner was like, oh yeah, the sign's so bright that the kids don't hang out in the parking lot anymore. And I'm like, that's not what the sign is for, you know, it shouldn't light your parking lot, it should be parking lot lights, a parking lot lights, not, you know, the sign. So, you know, I feel like we've done a pretty nice compromise with the sign, you know, it's not, we're not telling them they got to take it down. I mean, I don't even know, does it have like whenever it gets ruined, they can't put it back? Is there language for that in here?
Yes.
More than fifty percent, or if it gets struck by lightning or ran over by a car or something?
They could put it back, it would just have to conform with all the requirements of the new, the new code.
So I'm, I mean, I think our code was thoughtfully drafted. I think it should stay the same.
Mr. Askew?
Thank you, Mayor.
I'm looking at a beautiful picture.
So.
I'm blinded.
It didn't, it never seemed like, it was an eight second, I guess that's the Han sign. It was supposed to go eight seconds and then rotate into another thing. I've never seen it do the eight second thing.
Well, we haven't regulated it yet.
Well, she, I would assume Terry went in front of.
We went and talked to them, and then we asked them, and they said they slowed it down, but as soon as they say it, then you forget it for a little bit, you're not driving by there, so they're going to put it right back up.
Can I chime in to you, Dave? But that was one of the things, when we were drafting this, I was concerned about this, and that's why I always try to think of code enforcement, like if we don't put strong enough penalties, people, just as soon as you leave, they turn up. Because I drive by the sign all the time, and I'll talk to him, or I'll talk to the police chief, and I say, I swear, it goes down and it comes right back up. Like it'll go down for a couple days, and then it's like, haha, they're not around, and then they'll go back up, and like, what's the penalty? So at one point, and I'm sorry I keep asking these questions, because we did so many versions of this, but at one point, you know, we were saying the penalty. of this, but at one point, you know, we were saying the penalty could be like, you turn your sign off for 30 days. Like, did the penalties make it in here, or did they fall out, like? So I think we maybe wanna add some, some penalties in here, so that they're, she's not like making herself crazy going by.
The only way the penalty goes up is if we take it to the special magistrate and he comes back as a repeat offender, then it's a $500 one.
But that puts a lot of work on to you, right? Like, that you have to keep-
Well, this, the, these sort of codes that have the ability to have them come in compliance or out of compliance in a very quick way, in this case by just a simple adjustment once the code enforcement officer leaves and goes somewhere else, are difficult to enforce. And the only way really to enforce them is with extra, extra resources. So essentially, we'd have to have someone monitoring these signs as, as much as we can. We'd have to take good video with good timing on it, and then we've gotta start bringing them in front of the special magistrate, and start finding some folks that are doing it. And we can do that. It's just gonna take the resources to be able to deal with it.
We'd have to change hours for code enforcement.
But don't you think-
Some of them have them working nights.
Well, you have seniorities.
But don't you think when there's penalties and people pay more attention to it, then, okay, great, you can drag me through this process and waste all your time? Like, but if they say, hey, you do this twice, you turn your sign off for 30 days, that might get people's attention, like, oh shoot, I don't wanna get, I don't wanna get crosswise.
Okay, so if we turn, if we'd say, you do this twice and you turn your sign off for 30 days, and they turn their sign off during that 30 days period, 30-day period, then we're still in the monitoring situation, and we end up having to be back in front of the special magistrate to enforce the suspension period. I don't, I'm not saying it's a bad idea. I think the only way to really address these is to change the culture of the folks that operate these by starting to catch some of them in violations. And initially, it may take extra resources by city staff, and then ultimately maybe it won't. And our experience in code enforcement, these kinda things, and it, it's sort of akin to folks that used to put out individual signs, temporary signs in front of their stores where they weren't allowed to, and they'd put these signs up, they weren't, they weren't installed, they would just stick them up either, you know, like an A-frame sign or something like that. And then, you, you catch them a couple times and you start finding them, and guess what? They stop putting the sign up. And, but it takes the, you gotta catch them a couple times to do it.
Councilmember Askew?
Yeah, we're, we're talking about two signs here, um, and we're talking about the eight-second. Can he turn that thing down? I'm okay with his sign. I mean, he paid for it and permitted and all that, for safety reasons. Like, turning it down would be okay in eight seconds and, but the extra code enforcement, I, I get it, it's a little later at night, but, um-
We don't have a problem changing our hours, we just need direction on what we're gonna do and when we're gonna start imposing it.
Can he turn, because now-
He can change it.
Okay.
It's all commuter, uh, computer-wise, so he can change it and keep it that way.
Okay, so we need to come up with some kind of what, what happens when you don't, when you-
Come in compliance.
Right.
In this case, it'd be pretty simple. We just, it would matter, again, it would matter resources and the code enforcement officer. The way the code enforcement statute reads is the code enforcement officer has to see the violation. So they can't rely on a neighbor that said, okay, I went out there and I timed it, and it was 10 seconds now and 20 seconds ago. So, so a code enforcement officer would have to see it. So they'd have to find the eight-second violation, make a note of it, and then circle back another time when it happens and make another note of violation, cite them, and then, uh, we, and then we move forward from there. And from a, from prosecuting it, a lot of times, we, we don't bring cases in front of the special magistrate if the respond, if the respondent complies, and say, okay, they came into compliance. But in this case, we probably would end up just bringing them anyway and saying-
And finding guilt.
You found, you came into compliance, but you were at a viola, you were in violation, so we're gonna adjudicate you having violated the code, so the next time you do this, now we're back to what Terry said, the fines $500 a day now. Or $500 a time.
Yeah. That's a good way. At, each time have it $500, not, yeah.
How do you determine what's too bright and what's acceptable brightness? How do you determine that? Do you have a meter or?
We do have a light meter, we just have to, um, make sure that it's working condition and make sure that, you know, we can go out there, not a problem. Needs to be calibrated, I believe.
I would just like to add, we do not have brightness standards in the, um, in the code for the EVM signs, because those were, um, removed when the, um, when council decided to turn the signs off at night, after a certain time.
Mr. Askew?
I think we also did that, because I think our own signs were not in compliance with the light standard. That was another, we put it in there, and we have some lights on 17th Street that weren't in compliance, and trust me, they came out of the woodwork letting us know that.
But once we talked to them, the very first time this started, um, anything on 17th Street that belonged to the city, they've never been in violation since then.
Okay.
So that was from the very beginning.
Well, you don't have to come in front of the magistrate then, do you?
Mr. Trace?
Yeah, I, I'm fine adding the brightness requirements, and you could pick or choose. If you don't have the, the brightness adjustment, the automatic brightness adjustment as part of the sign, then you turn it off at, you know, whatever hours the code has, and then having the brightness standards if you wanna keep it on at night. But, yeah, six seconds or whatever the, the standard flip is between them, and then brightness, because it's, the, the sign on Neptune is a safety hazard, and you can see it from, like, 10th and Georgia. Yeah, you can see it from 10th and Georgia, you can see it across 192 and see it flipping, so it's, it's-
How do I get home? Hollowing the light.
And if it, and if it's that bad, again, you know, there, there's ability with, with the police department to address it if it is a traffic hazard, without having to go the code enforcement route.
Mr. Askew?
So, Mr. Hans knows about, and it, is it set at eight seconds now?
No.
Is that what, or is it six seconds or something?
It's two, maybe.
Okay.
No one's come into compliance yet, because we noticed, you know, we did the notices, and then we, and we said, oh, we're gonna hold off, so.
And then anim, do we have animation in there? Because that was his thing, he's like, I gotta have animation on my sign, and I said, well, that's something we can talk about.
No animation.
No animation?
And he's gonna be the hardest one, because he's already won a lawsuit in Kissimmee, and that's what he keeps throwing up, is I won Kissimmee and I can win St. Cloud. So, but I don't know, I'm just going by what he said.
Okay.
Not aware of that.
Yeah.
We'll certainly look into it.
Yeah.
I'm sure Dan will be on the phone tomorrow.
Exactly.
So are we here?
I think so.
Clear?
I think so. We, we like the code mostly. Is there a consensus on whether we want the option, like, um, council member Trace suggested, to either have the light meter or the hours of operation?
I'm, I'm fine with that. Like, either they have to turn it off, or they have to like drop it to whatever you had in there before, it was like really low, right? Like one foot candle or something?
It, it would be .3 foot candles over ambient light is, is pretty much the standard that's adopted everywhere.
And what, what do you mean by the hours? Like the hours' operation?
Right. Right now, we have, it, it's either 9:00 PM or 10:00 PM they have to turn off unless the business is open to the public. And then, I, I think if I understood correctly, the, the option would be if you have an ambient light meter, you could keep the sign on 24 hours a day, as long as it stayed relative to ambient light.
Okay. Okay, so we already do have the, the brightness adjustment as part of code?
It's not in the current code, but there, there is definitely language that would not be an issue to add to, to do that.
Okay. So, on the hours' operation part, it, I think it should still be in somewhat compliance with the brightness, because you could just have it super bright until 9:00 PM, turn off, and-
Right, exactly. That, that, that's an issue we may have right now.
Yeah, if we could fix that.
Sure. So just add brightness standards just across the board.
Yeah.
What else?
I, I do have one thing. Not this. So, a resident brought this up to me the other day, and I said I would bring it up to you guys since we were having a workshop, but, um, somebody who lives right by the lakefront in St. Cloud, and too bad Stephanie's not here, but, um, apparently, whenever there's a lot of part, you know, the parties are always down at the lakefront in those pavilions every weekend, and so they're saying that balloons are released all the time accidentally, like people bring balloons and do all this stuff, and like, they end up a few times in this person's yard that lives near the lakefront, and they're like all entangled in fishing line and all that other stuff. So the resident asked me if, why doesn't the city, um, prohibit balloons in the pavilion, seeing how they're so bad for nature? You know, it's kind of like, they're bad for the wildlife, they're bad for the animals, they're bad for everything, and, you know, they're saying that it's a problem out there, and the trash is a problem too, that the trash blows across the street, and, um, so I said, again, for code enforcement, I said, that'd be really hard for somebody to like, you know, enforce, but they were saying, well, I should just put it on the permit application, that there's no balloons, and, um, you know, so I don't know if staff wants to come up and say something, but they were saying that it is a problem, and it ends up tangled up and everything.
I think that means staff supports that.
Councilmember Askew?
So, so code enforcement's have to go around, and they're like gonna pop little kids' balloons?
We're gonna give her like a big pen? We're gonna give her a big pen and poop, poop. So I don't know if the trash is something we could help address by putting more trash receptacles out there, I don't, or larger, and I'd never, I've never seen it, but they're saying that, you know, they live across from the park, and it's like constantly in their yard, and, and so I don't know if staff has anything to add to that.
We'll look at how we can minimize that.
I'm not in favor of no blooms.
Yeah, how do you have a birthday party with no blooms?
Yeah.
A kid's birthday party?
No straws either, just kidding.
What about the airliners going on? I was thinking about that.
So maybe if Stephanie could look into that and come back to us?
Yes.
Okay, that'd be great.
Mr. Askew?
Um, I asked the mayor if I could bring up, we're, the 2020 legislative lobbying effort, uh, number four is a local bill for annexation of, can we just like talk about that for just real quick? How, I just wanna know how council feels about that. It, it's, um, I'm not, I'm not, I don't know. Bill, maybe you can explain it better. What are, what are we shooting for here?
So it's my understanding that there's certain areas of the city, like Mr. Askew always talks about getting the dirt, that we could through local, a local bill, have our legislature pass a bill that we, they just send one swoop, annex certain parts of the dirt that we want. For example, over by Kissimmee Park Road that Mr. Trace talked about. I think that's a perfect opportunity for us to grab that. And, and Dan helped me, outside the normal statute requirements, but the, the legislature can do that. It is difficult. I've talked to our lobbyists, they're, you know, it's difficult, but it can be done.
I mean, there's definitely some pros and cons, though. I talked to Mike LaRosa just kind of about some other stuff, and I sort of brought that up just to, you know, and I think he's, um, he's getting his ear pulled too, in one direction, and I told him some things that I have concerns of about impact fees and not having a say in the project, and basically what we were talking about earlier. You know, if we can do a little bit more kumbaya with the county and the city. But, um, I, I don't understand the process 100%. I mean, I've read some of the ones that did happen, and, um, I guess because it's part of our lobbying effort, I'm sure we're gonna talk about beforehand, but I really hate to go up there and get in front of our, um, legislators and go, hey, we're wanting to do this, and all of a sudden we get into some argument that, oh, what do you mean, we wanna do that? And so, I think before, if we agree as a council that that's the direction we wanna head, I think we need to go and have discussions with the folks who are gonna make those final decisions up in Tallahassee, so we need to go and sit down in front of their desk and give our reasons why, which is financially or whatever we're gonna do. But I think that's a decision council needs to say, we're gonna go forward or we're not gonna go forward, something like that, or do we need more information from Bill?
Well, if I'm just quick comment on it, the process, I, I think you really need to vet it with the local legislative delegation before you even move very far with it. To the extent that the process involves the annexation of private property, it is akin to an involuntary annexation. And in our experience, local politicians, local elected officials tend to avoid involuntary annexations by making folks do stuff that they don't necessarily want to do. You know, it's unlike the encumbrances annexations that we have here, or even the enclave reduction annexations that you have. So it's, um, it's a considerable ask for your local delegation, and you may wanna vet that with them before we carry a whole lot of water on this thing up to Tallahassee, because you may not wanna put them in the position where they have to say, they just fight off to say, no, I can't do it.
Yeah, that's the reason we're bringing it up now, because this is a huge thing, and if that's something we wanna look at, or a small section, or not do it at all, I'm okay with any of them, but something like that needs to be vetted, definitely needs to be vetted out, just from a quick conversation with one of them, so, um, I think council, or we, maybe more information for council, and then we talk about it a little bit later. Pros and cons, good, the bad, the ugly. Just throwing it out there.
I-
Well, I think we sort of need some specifics, and, um, but the involuntary.
You're bringing back the-
Well, I did. I, I sent out a, a draft proposed lobbying efforts this year, and that was included, like you said, that was number four. Again, and some of those are, we already started doing the legislative paperwork, pending council approval on those, but it's such a big paperwork mess that I asked the staff to go and start putting that together, but the local bill, we haven't done anything on. That's just something I know we've discussed over the last couple of years, and, and I thought we would just throw it on the list to see if we wanna move forward, and we can definitely get more details.